All right. Good evening, and you can hear a lot of commotion in the council chambers. We have some great swearing-in ceremonies that are going to be happening here shortly, but I am Mayor Bailey, and I'm calling this May 15, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council meeting to order. The first order of business, of course, is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, Administrator, please do the roll tonight.
Councilmember Kabata.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity, if anybody wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, is welcome to do so. We did have a sign-up sheet out front, and nobody did sign up, so I'm assuming nobody wants to speak, but I'll ask one last time. Is there anybody who wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close. Open forum will move to five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede.
Our second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next to six is presentations, and this is the exciting stuff tonight, especially our very first one here, which is the swearing-in ceremony for the Deputy Fire Chief Nicholas Aragoni and Fire Captain Brandon Ekron. Ekron?
Ekron.
Ekron. And council, we're going to walk down in front while our Director of Public Safety Pete Kerner gets the ball rolling with the rest of the group, so let's roll.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. As you know, each time, we do it a little different with our swearing-ins, but tonight we're going to be swearing in Nick Aragoni as our newest Deputy Fire Chief and Brandon Ekron as a captain. And just a real short, as you know, Rick Reddiness retired last, December 31st. I know he's in the audience somewhere in Cottineal. But with that, you know, all of a sudden, all the dominoes went off. So John Pritchard was promoted to Fire Chief, and with that, Nick took John's position, and now Brandon is taking Nick's position. So without saying more, I would like to introduce Fire Chief John Pritchard, and he's going to read some bios and do a quick welcome, and then we'll do the swearing-in and badge pinning. So, thank you.
Chief?
Well, we'll get it to nine, so. Thank you, Director Kerner, council. I'm going to ask Brandon Ekron. Just have Brandon come up here.
Yeah.
We get to look at you as we introduce you to the crowd, so. Yeah, come. All right. So Brandon's being sworn in this evening after a well-deserved promotion to captain. Brandon started with the Cottage Grove Fire Department in October of 2017 and brought a wealth of experience, knowledge, and skills to the department. Brandon started his fire EMS career with the White Bear Lake Fire Department in April of 2009 as a part-time firefighter and EMT. In 2015, Brandon was promoted to a part-time firefighter/paramedic at White Bear Lake after his graduation from the Hennepin County Medical Center Paramedic Program. Brandon has also served as an EMT for Health East, which is now known as M-How for four years. Brandon has been a foundational part of the fire department since his arrival six years ago. Brandon has been such a great role model for professionalism, excellence, leading by example. He's contributed profoundly to the development of training of many firefighters and has led the way through department's many improvement efforts. Brandon has served as one of our primary field training officers, helped design the department's evidence-based field training program, and he's also served as a fire EMS instructor, live burn instructor, and as a member of the Washington County Mobile Field Force. Brandon is also a state-certified fire instructor, live burn instructor, fire officer, and fire apparatus operator. Brandon lives in White Bear Lake with his wife Bethany and children Tucker, who's up there with Brandon, and his daughter Violet. Brandon enjoys spending time with his family, working out, gardening, fishing, and gaming. So tonight, Brandon's son Tucker will be pinning Brandon.
All right, Brandon, this is your moment now, in front of your peers, your family, and the community to take your oath. So please raise your right hand after me and repeat as I go. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brandon Ekron.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of Fire Captain.
Of the position of Fire Captain.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
And the county of Washington.
And the county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. And then I'll have Nick Aragoni come up to the front here. So tonight, we're going to be swearing in Nick Aragoni as our new Deputy Fire Chief. Nick started his career with the Cottage Grove Fire Department 2009, where he served as a part-time, since 2009, where he served as a part-time EMT firefighter/EMT and as a part-time firefighter/paramedic, after completing his Associate's in Science degree and obtaining his paramedic certification in 2013. Nick worked at Lakeview EMS as a paramedic until his promotion to a full-time firefighter/paramedic in 2014. In 2020, Nick was promoted to Fire Captain. In his role as firefighter and Fire Captain, Nick has led the department in many, many ways, including supporting fleet and equipment services, serving as a fire slash EMS training instructor, a live burn instructor, incident command instructor, and many other roles and responsibilities. Nick holds his Associate's in Fire Science degree and will be completing his bachelor's degree this July. And he's promised he will complete that on times. Yeah. This may be, to many, this may be a surprise, but impressively, this is only half of Nick's background. Nick has served in the Army National Guard for 13 years, with the last 10 years in an elite role as a flight paramedic and squad leader with Charlie Company 2211. General supports Aviation Battalion, where Nick is currently a Staff Sergeant. In great service to our nation, Nick was deployed to overseas from June 2018 through May 2019 to support Operation Inherent Resolve and Spartan, Operation Spartan Shield, where his unit provided medevac coverage for Kuwait, Jordan, Syria, and Iraq. Nick proudly shares he would do it again in a heartbeat. As a lifelong resident of Cottage Grove, Nick is proud to serve the community, where he has spent his life and is even more proud to serve the nation that he loves. Nick currently lives with his fiancee Katie, who's a saint, by the way. So Nick is eternally grateful to his fiancee, family, and friends for all their support. Nick thinks his mentors that have helped him through his career, who have helped him learn and grow. He humbly shares he would not be in this position today if it was not for them. Nick is grateful to the public safety and city leadership team for entrusting him for the position and throughout his growth in his career. Nick looks forward to many years to come serving the community of Cottage Grove. And Nick's fiancee Katie will be pinning him this evening, so.
All right, you saw how this was done. All right, good job. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nicholas Aragoni.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of Deputy Fire Chief.
Of the position of Deputy Fire Chief.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
For the city of Cottage Grove.
And the county of Washington.
And the county of Washington.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yep.
I'll keep the two of you apart.
Ready? One, two, three.
Can we get all firefighters come on, please? Retirees as well, please. Other retirees as well, please. Dandelions, you didn't come up in the front.
That's always a fun, exciting evening to do that.
No, I agree too.
All right, while they're filing out, we do have one more present, well, technically two, but presentations this evening. It is the 2024 Historic Preservation of the Year, and Connor Jakes, who is our Associate Planner, is going to walk us through this, and that's why I asked council to stay down here, so we can recognize those individuals.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A pleasure to be with you for the presentation of the 2024 Historic Preservationist of the Year Award. Annually, the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation nominates a recipient of the award that goes above and beyond in the promotion of Cottage Grove's history and the preservation of the rich history of the city. This year, the ACHP has nominated Cindy Iff and Kathy DeMar for their work on the preservation of the history and information that they've gathered on the Old People's Home and Cemetery, which is off of 70th Street South. They've created a binder information that will inform generations of future residents and really just hold the history of that site for residents, staff, and anyone interested in Cottage Grove history. With that, I'll play a video that talks about the site and then further talks about Cindy and Kathy as well.
Cindy and Kathy, I want to thank you dearly for your work on the Old People's Home and Cemetery.
Due to their efforts in bringing this cemetery back to life, to do what they did, we just felt they were the most deserving this year.
I'm Cindy Iff.
And I'm Kathy DeMar, and we're here at the Old People's Home and Cemetery. If you look into the cemetery, you'll see an empty circle, and that's what I call it. It's just a circle with grass in it because there's no markers. If you drive by here, you wouldn't even know it's here. This is a cemetery. This is at the top of the hill. A little ways over, quite a ways over, was the Old People's Home. They farmed and did all their own food, and then a church had like camp meetings down on what would be Highway 61 now.
The house burned down in the morning of November 16, 1917. 5:30 in the morning, the workers found a fire in the attic.
Everyone that I talked to about this when we were in the process, everyone was saying it's probably just a poor farm, and it's not a poor farm. And these people were here, they were immigrants coming here. Probably their families brought them with. They got sick and they needed help, so they ended up there. Also, a lot of our research was difficult because they were Scandinavian, and they were all named Nelson and Johnson and Larson and Lars Johnson and John Larson, and so it wasn't easy genealogy that you get other languages.
We've been working on this project for about a year and a half.
They're looking for grants, so we already got a yes on a new fence going around.
And a new plaque.
A bigger plaque with more of the story.
Well, I think it was just, it was a forgotten place. Maybe with our work, it won't get lost again. And it's, you know, it's kind of interesting. It's giving them back their voice, and that people just haven't forgotten them.
Not only did you find information that none of us were aware of, but you've truly brought forward a whole story on the site. From what was just a simple acre plot on 70th Street, we now have a robust history on the individuals who were buried there and the history of the site that was there before. What you have done in turning a small sign on a one-acre lot into a whole book on the history of this site has significant meaning to the city and will not only outlast myself, but will outlast all of us, and I think that's what really matters here.
So once again, Kathy and Cindy, congratulations on this award. I hope you stay with our society, and we hope you keep up your good work. Thank you.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. And if you'd like to come on up front, that would be fantastic. Start with Kathy. All right. So we're going to go ahead and present this to you. It says the 2024 Preservationist of the Year presented to Kathy DeMar for your contribution to the preservation of Cottage Grove's historical resources, May 15, 2024, by the City of Cottage Grove and the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation. So once again, on behalf of myself, the council, and all the citizens of Cottage Grove, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
And then next is Cindy. Is it Yif? Yif? Iff? Iff, okay. Thank goodness you know me with names sometimes. So it's 2024 Preservation of the Year presented to Cindy Iff for your contribution to the preservation of Cottage Grove's historical resources, May 15, 2024, by the City of Cottage Grove and the Advisory Committee on Historic Preservation. And once again, I know it sounds like a broken record, but it's important. On behalf of myself, the council, our staff, and all its citizens, thank you for helping us preserve our history. All right, before they go sit down, I'm just going to look, I'm going to put them on the spot, and they're going, oh, please, no. So my only question for you is, I've always driven by there, and I do remember, when you were showing the picture of the house, I do actually remember that house growing up in Cottage Grove. So the question is, any real interesting people that you discovered after going through all the history of the different people that were there?
Well, I think that the most interesting thing is that it was, they were immigrants, and they didn't come from Cottage Grove. There's not people in Cottage Grove buried there. So they made it to the United States, they made it to this area that was high in Scandinavian immigration in that time, and the families came, they had farms around Minnesota, but the grandmas and grandpas got old and sick, and so they had a place to go.
Anything more you'd like to add?
Not really.
Well, thanks again to both of you, and thanks for your service and the rest of the group's service on the Historic Preservation Committee. We do appreciate all the work that you guys do. Awesome.
We're not done.
I'm glad you're not. Thank you.
Congratulations. Can you fundraise it? Is that right? No, I thought I heard something.
Thank you. Yep.
To do something, you know, to make it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was really interesting.
Thank you.
Though it's kind of an, I'll call it a unnamed, so to speak, cemetery, the reason I asked the question, if they found anybody unique or interesting specifically out of that cemetery, is it took many, many years before we realized that the cemetery next to McDonald's actually has the original heirs of the Mars Candy Company, who are buried here in Cottage Grove. So there is an interesting line of history through our community, whether it's immigrants that came to settle here, or people that started their lives somewhere in the area here and then grew on to, you know, being the owners of Mars Candy Company. So, all right. So next, though, on here is the 2024 Historic Preservation Month Proclamation. And I did ask, since he's our liaison, I did ask Councilmember Thede to read that proclamation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, "People have been gathering in this area currently known as Cottage Grove, Minnesota, for many years before and after recorded history, and each individual family or group of people that visited or lived in this community has contributed in one form or another to the interesting fabric that binds our past and present together. And the Cottage Grove City Council wishes to recognize the importance of learning and keeping the knowledge of our unique history accessible and relevant to current and new residents as well as the general public. And the Cottage Grove City Council holds deep gratitude for individuals and organizations that gather, interpret, and share information and stories on our distant and current past. Now therefore, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim that May 2024 shall be declared Historic Preservation Month for the City of Cottage Grove, Minnesota, and all are invited to explore our history, your history, and the history of generations to come." Potentially pass this day, the 15th day of May 2024.
All right, so I guess with that, I'll ask you if you'd like to make the motion to pass that proclamation.
I will make the motion to pass this, as May 2024 is Historic Preservation Month.
All right, so I have a second. Second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And next is Dee, which is the Building Safety Month Proclamation, and I did ask Councilmember Garza to read this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation Building Safety Month. Cottage Grove is committed to recognizing that the growth and strength of our community depends on the safety and essential roles our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, and we are confident in the vigilant experts in building safety, fire prevention, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety construction of buildings. And Building Safety Month is also a time to remind the public about the critical role of our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at a home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 to be designated as Building Safety Month. Pass this Wednesday, the 15th day of May 2024, signed by Mayor Myron Bailey.
All right, so with that, would you like to make that motion?
I will make a motion to, for the Building Safety Month of May 2024.
All right, so we have a motion, second by Councilmember Olson on that one, too. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, E, but definitely not the least, very important part of our, like the other one, our community, and that's Public Works, National Public Works Week, May 19 through the 25th, and Councilmember Kabata is going to take us through this one.
Thank you, sir. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Cottage Grove. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Cottage Grove to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, now therefore, the Mayor and City Council of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota do hereby designate the week of May 19 to the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they all make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Pass on Wednesday, the 15th day of May 2024.
All right, so Councilmember Kabata, would you like to make that official motion?
I would like to make the motion, yes.
All right, so we have a motion made by Councilmember Kabata. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. All right. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council, for reading and passing those proclamations. All right, next on our agenda is consent items. Does any council member have anything they want to pull on consent? Councilmember Olson.
I would like to pull aye, please, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
All right, seeing none at this point, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Olson on aye, which is the Highway 61 River Oaks are cut cooperative construction agreement.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The reason I chose to pull this item is because this is something that's been a long time coming, and I wanted to make sure that the residents knew exactly what this is and why. coming, and I wanted to make sure that the residents knew exactly what this is and why it is occurring. So I'm not sure if our city administrator, perhaps our Public Works Director or city engineer wants to take this. You guys can wrestle over it if you'd like, but if we could just give the residents a brief explanation of what we're doing, why we're doing it, how this is going to work, I would sure appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so for this item, it's the, it's called the R-Cut Intersection, so reduced conflict U-turn intersection. They're coming much more commonplace on these high-speed, kind of more limited access, you know, highways, freeways throughout Minnesota and other states as well. You see a lot on Highway 52, and there's a new one down on Highway 61 further south as well. And really what they're targeting is these areas where it's just not practical or feasible or really safe to have something like a signal, right? Because I think we all know the history of Highway 36 and the challenges they've had up there with their intersections. So what this does is it, it really takes out that median opening right at, you know, River Oaks entrance and kind of south entrance to Gerlaks, but it builds two U-turns in pretty close proximity. So it's not necessarily, you know, providing new gaps or like a quicker access, but it's a safer access to the highway. The most deadly and dangerous crashes are those right-angle crashes at high speed, so this really, I don't want to say eliminates them, but it's about a 90% reduction in serious injury and fatality crashes based on all the data MINDOT has over the years for these type of intersections. So a very major safety improvement and something that I think is, you know, much needed and long deserved down there.
Thank you very much, Ryan. I appreciate that, and we've been talking to MINDOT about this for, gosh, I don't know, a long time. So I think it's pretty exciting that we actually are moving forward with it, and I very much appreciate your explanation so the public understands if you're visiting River Oaks, this is going to create a much safer way for you to get out and, and, you know, yes, you'll have to take a right-hand turn and move down 61 just a smidge before you're able to take that U-turn, but I think this is going to save lives and certainly reduce accidents, so I appreciate that. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, since no other items were pulled on consent, I'll look for a motion for consent.
I'll make a motion for consent.
All right, so Councilmember Garza is making a motion to approve consent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Kabata. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So if anybody's watching or here for anything that's on tonight's consent calendar or agenda item, I guess, they have all been approved. I will move to number eight, which is approved disbursement. Eight A is to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Nine is public hearings, there aren't none this evening. Ten is bid awards, there are none this evening. Eleven, we don't have anything on our quote-unquote "regular agenda," and so we're all the way down now to council comments requests, and I'll go to my customary starting point here, which is Councilmember Kabata.
Do I have anything to add?
Oh, you're gonna make it quick. Awesome. We'll move right on then, I guess, to Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four things briefly. Junk Day, May 4th, at Public Works. It was a rainy, gloomy day for the vast majority of the day, and I know that our Public Works team and our Parks and Rec team certainly didn't relish being out in the rain all day. But that being said, they did an incredible job of handling the number of cars that came through. In fact, I think we beat the previous year, and somebody will have to correct me if I'm wrong, but were we over 900 or were we?
Close to 1,000.
Close to 1,000 cars. And last year was somewhere in the neighborhood of 850, 60, somewhere around there. So I just wanted to express my thanks to the team for braving through the rain. I know that, you know, there were brats on the grill and some hot chocolate and different things, but I also heard from many of the employees there that they had family members or friends bringing them changes of clothes because it was pretty miserable. So, again, a really successful day, even with the rain. I think that's something that our residents look forward to each year. I know my wife certainly does, and she was one of the very first ones in line, and the team did an incredible job, as always. Second thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, is Park Football Boosters have a pancake breakfast this Saturday at Muddy Cow from 8:00 in the morning until 10:00 in the morning. Tickets will be sold at the door. Those are $10 apiece. This is for Park Football Team 86. There'll be all kinds of football players and coaches there, taking good care of whomever comes through the door, serving pancakes. I know they did coffee and all the other fixings last year as well, so I'm looking forward to stopping down there for that. I also wanted to mention that we are quickly approaching Memorial Day, and for those of you who may not be aware, the City of Cottage Grove does hold a Memorial Day event each year to honor the fallen and also to ensure that our residents have an opportunity to mourn loved ones lost, et cetera. That event will be held at 10:00 a.m. this year on Memorial Day, which is Monday, the 27th of May. It will be held right out in front of City Hall, weather permitting. That setup goes over by the Veterans Memorial, so if you are walking into City Hall, it's just off to your right. SWCTC will be there, they will be doing a live broadcast as well, so if you're unable to attend, you'll be able to follow at home. And our guest speaker this year is somebody that you've already seen on TV tonight, and that is Herb Reckinger. Herb is the Chair of our Commission on Historic Preservation. He is also a longtime Cottage Grove resident, former Navy reservist, and he does incredible work with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund. Our theme this year is a salute to Vietnam-era veterans. So Herb is the best speaker we could think of to tell stories about loved ones who were lost and who perhaps still have not been found. He does a lot of work with the Wall That Heals, which is a wall of pictures for Vietnam-era veterans who weren't able to make it home, and we're really looking forward to having Herb tell us his story. So again, 10:00 a.m., Memorial Day, right out here in front of City Hall. If the weather is bad, we will move inside. Not as many seats inside as we will have outside, but one way or the other, we're going to have that event. And that is sponsored by the Mississippi River Valley Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Team in partnership with our public safety team here in Cottage Grove and the Washington County Sheriff's Office. And then the last thing, Mayor, as I speak about Memorial Day, I want to mention that today, May 15th, every year, is Peace Officers Memorial Day, as declared by Congress and President Kennedy in 1962. This year, we've already lost 58 of our brave law enforcement officers across the country. We lost 138 last year. And today is the day that we pay our respects, that we remember, that we honor, and I just want to say that on such a somber occasion, it's really important that we, as a nation, show our support to our law enforcement officers. The men and women who serve should come home every night safe to their families, but that doesn't always happen, and unfortunately, that's why we have Peace Officers Memorial Day. So when you go to bed tonight, if you can take an extra minute and say a prayer for the families and the colleagues of those who have been lost, including those in the city of Burnsville who lost three of their brave officers not very long ago, I would certainly appreciate that, and I think that's the least we can do. We can never say thank you enough to our law enforcement professionals, so let's take a moment to remember those that we lost. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Olson, and we'll move on to, I guess, Councilmember Thede.
Okay, I think there's, I think it's kind of just five weeks until Strawberry Fest, and we're really gearing up. We've got great, great signups so far. We've had to, even though we increased food vendors and so forth, we've had to cut that off. We've been turning them away, you know, additional ones in terms of the Strawberry Fields marketplace and the different booths and so forth. I think we've got close to 110, 115 of those, and we're actually kind of closing that off, too, in terms of just having, can't really handle too many more than that. We've got, you know, bands lined up, fireworks are lined up, everything's go. And now remember, in past years, it's been on the Father's Day weekend, but this, because of the way things worked out, this year, it is the week after. So it is, it was actually June 20th through the 23rd this year. So, you know, if you show up the week before, nobody would be there yet, so. But it's a great park. You can have fun anyway, that Kingston Park. And so I'd say get excited. We've got another meeting this coming Monday if we still need volunteers to help out, and if we get the same kind of weather and turnout that we've had the last couple of years, it'll be a fantastic event in terms of the quantity of people and everything that show up, too, so. So get excited.
There we go. Thank you, Councilmember Thede. How about Councilmember Garza?
I don't have anything.
Nothing tonight, okay. All right. The only couple, just real quick things that I would mention is, as you look going forward here, is on every Thursday, and I believe it's every Thursday here at City Hall, if you're interested, there is a food truck that shows up out here. I know our staff loves it and our public safety group, but the fact is, it is open to the public, so anytime between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00, you're welcome to come out and try some food. And this week, Long Combo Row is going to be out in front of City Hall tomorrow. And then the other one, which is before we get to our next council meeting, is the Fourth Annual One Family Sports Festival, which would be May 25th and 26th at Kingston Park. This is a huge event, has a lot of sports going on there, food trucks, a lot of fun things happening, and I encourage you, if you haven't had the chance in the past, to go over there and check it out. Spend a little time over there, meet your neighbors and friends and others that are coming from around the entire state, frankly. It's a neat event that has been home in Cottage Grove for many years now, but a lot of people don't think they realize what's going on because it is that Memorial Week and Weekend Event. So I just wanted to throw that out there for the group, and once we get further into June, obviously, we'll talk a little bit more about Strawberry Fest and some of the other items that are going to be coming up yet this summer. So with that, the next item, which is a workshop open to the public, and in this workshop, which you'll be doing in the training room, is the Public Safety Five-Year Strategic Plan, and after that, there is no workshop closed to the public, and so we won't be adjourning in here. Council will join our staff and public safety team in the training room, so everybody have a great evening and a great, great week.